Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to the October 10th, 2023 Board of Education Meeting. We are calling the meeting to order. It is 7:06 PM, and if everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. A reading of meeting notice. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Verona Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published in the Star Ledger posted with the Township of Verona and the Verona Education Association. Postings of this meeting setting forth the time, location, and agenda were posted at the Verona Public Board of Education Office and the Verona Public Schools District website. Copies of tonight's agenda and resolutions have been made available to the public via the Verona Board of Education website. Mr. Cruz, if you could please call attendance.
Sure, Ms. Walker. Mrs. Frizzola.
Here.
Mrs. Farrar. Mrs. Prisco.
Here.
Mrs. Freshy.
Here.
We have Coram. Thank you.
Moving on, I'm gonna go right into our superintendent's report with Ms. Diane Giuseppi.
Good evening. So I wanted to remind the board the end of last school year, Carol Thomas and I applied for the Trees for Schools grant. Unfortunately, there were a tremendous number of applicants and we had, we're not selected in round one. However, they're going back to the benefactor that was providing funds and if we get another shot, we will resubmit. Any, any missing, I don't think there was anything missing, but maybe screw up the application and resubmit. So that's unfortunate. We are in the process, the Graphic Box Club and Mrs. Sakatano are reproducing the strategic plan posters and we have to find all the old ones. I don't know whether this one here or not, and replace old ones with the new ones. It's good to see the students getting involved to do that. Tomorrow, we have PSAT day at the high school for 10th and 11th grade students. And our eighth grade students are attending a field trip to the Museum of Jewish Heritage on Thursday, October 19th and Friday, October 20th. Some of these exhibits that are available to our students at this time are the Holocaust, What Hate Can Do, Survivors, Faces of Life After the Holocaust, and Andy Gold's Were These Garden of Stones, which actually looks really beautiful. So I hope the kids enjoy that. Professional Development Day went well yesterday in the morning. Teachers focused on learning a new platform to complete SGOs and PDPs online instead of in paper or PDF, which is just gonna, you know, once everyone gets used to the new platform, it just is so much less clerical work for our principals and our supervisors that we're spending a lot of time downloading and then uploading, downloading from this program, uploading this program. And it's, it was really time consuming. So they'll be housed in one spot. The rest of the day, our teachers are still engaging in small groups to unpack the New Jersey Student Learning Standards and their respective areas of grade levels. On the note of student learning standards, they were, the new standards for English Language Arts and Mathematics were approved by the State Board of Education by a very slim margin of five to four. You know, we thought the, the argument was gonna be over the controversy over science of reading versus other language approaches, and it really centered on primarily the implementation of the climate standards across all subject areas. That was the sticking part, sticking point. We have more professional development coming up on October 19th and 20th. When Brian is coming back, she's been working with our teachers and administrators now for two years, or administrators for two years, teachers recently. She's with Instructional Empowerment and she will be training our administrators in side-by-side coaching. And just a shout out to our teachers that took part in the training over the summer that agreed to be our test subjects. So these are the people who are gonna watch their lessons and, and and they're, have volunteered to do that for us. So at the elementary school, Lauren Till, Megan La Boy, and Carissa Walker. At the middle school, Heather Derada, Carolyn Moy, and Nadia Dominic. And at the high school, Amanda Highland, Janon Webbe, and Chris Tamboro. So really, thank you so much because we would not be able to train our administrators if the teachers weren't willing to, to join us and put themselves on, on display for us. So, and we, in the afternoon on the 20th, the principals will work with Gwen on training for the new principal evaluation system. So, and that's a three and a half hour training and we'll modernize that tool as well. So lots of professional development going on. That's it. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions?
But with the horrific issues that happened in Israel this past weekend, is there any concern about safety at the Holocaust Museum?
That's a good question. Mr. Galbachek and I spoke about it today and we, he's been in contact with the museum. They have increased safety all around. It's probably one of the safer places to be in the city. Yeah. So, and what he's gonna allow parents, if they, if they don't feel comfortable, they can opt out and the teachers will provide different instruction for the students.
Thank you. Moving on to our student representative report, Risha Hadle.
So on, let's see, so from October 4th to the, through the 6th, the Student Council held a fundraiser for breast cancer awareness month, selling bracelets to raise funds for Minette's Angels. Next week will be Spirit Week with themed, themed days for each day leading up to a like hallway decorating event on, after school on Thursday, October 9th, and the Fall Pep Rally on Friday, October 20th with like on Wednesday, October 18th, Cheer for a Cure as well. So Pep Rally will be in the last part of the school day, like the last period or so. Kids will get pulled from class and then just some like games and like drum up some excitement for the end of the fall season. On October 26th, from 9 to 11, VHS will be sending four to five student council officers to speak with other students, other student council members and learn about how they operate their councils at James Caldwell High School. The field trip will have, students will drive themselves to the field trip and this was hosted last year as well. So this is gonna be like an ongoing event. On Thursday, October 12th, 9 through 11, I believe, will be taking PSAT, last time I checked on that. And October 14th, VHS will host its annual Festival of the Bands. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Reese, I have a quick question. What was the date of the pep rally you said again?
Yeah, October 20th.
October 20th. Thank you.
Shout out to the, you just mentioned the Cheer for a Cure. That's gonna be on the 18th. I just wanna give a shout out to the high school cheerleaders. They cheered on the 6th in Bloomfield and I think that they were absolutely amazing. I was blown away by their work. So, good job, girls.
Thank you. Anyone have any other questions? Moving on to our athletics, our committee reports, we just have athletics. Would you like me to take that, Mr. Walker?
Sure. So, we met last week on October 5th and all our sports teams are, our full sports are starting county tournaments and getting ready for playoffs. Again, for our cheering program, they were at Cheer for a Cure in Bloomfield and they did place, first place in the stunting for that competition. So congratulations to them. They are doing an amazing job. Coming up for Minette's Angels, they had the Dig Pink, which was on October 4th. A fundraiser at the high school football game on October 6th. And we will be hosting Cheer for a Cure, the Verona High School Cheerleaders are hosting Cheer for a Cure here, which will be on October 18th. That'll be here and that'll be our high school cheerleaders, the Verona Eagles Program and the VCC Competitive Program. They will be also here on that day with Minette's Angels. And let's see, National Walk to School Day was October 4th. I attended Lanning with my nephew and the volley, and the volleyball girls. There was 35 senior athletes and I believe some band members that, senior band members that attended and went to their home schools where they went and walked with the students. So I know, I did see a video for FM Brown and there was a lot of participation at the corner of Linden and Grove. Yeah, let's see, what else do we have coming up? Oh. Minette's Angels will also, also be at the basketball game on February 13th. I mean, that's far away, but it'll be here before you know it. Field trips, we have two field trips set, one for October 28th for the Model UN. Mr. Bob Morris' class will be, he'll be taking six to seven students coming up October 28th. And then in March, March 21st to March 24th, the band and possibly the choir will be visiting Spring Hill Suites in Virginia Beach. Mr. Walker, is there anything that I?
I think you nailed it.
Oh wait, I do have one other thing. The outdoor speaker system. I skipped over that. Was installed on September 14th and hopefully we will have no more issues with our sound system at the field.
And the one other cool thing was, I guess, the one school that our, the volleyball team had played was touted to be one of the best teams in the state and our girls went and did a really good job and beat them. So that was a huge, you know, thing for the girls. So that's awesome for the girls volleyball team.
Yes. Thank you. Any questions? Okay, so we're gonna move on to our public comments on Agenda Action items only. So if there's anything that we are voting on that you would like to speak on, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and you will have three minutes. Seeing none. Moving on to our discussion items. For discussion items, I have just one item I just wanted to mention on. Our, our Candidates Forum will be held Thursday, October 19th. And the ti, it'll be in this room. It will be at 7:00 PM for the two, two men that are running for council, I mean Board of Ed, not council. So, and you can submit your questions. I believe on MyVerona, there's a link. If you have questions for the candidates, you can submit them prior to, I think, midnight that Sunday. So. And that's it. Does anybody have any other discussion items?
I have a couple things. First, I wanted to report out on the resolution that was before the Essex County Board of Ed. It was voted on, it was a resolution about the proclamation against book banning, for lack of better terms. It's like three pages long. It did pass the county board. It was a 14 to 3 vote. So it will be going to the New Jersey School Boards Delegates Convention in December, where we voted on by all the delegates that represent all the school boards and charter schools and various other educational entities in the state. So the other thing I wanted to talk about is after we heard Dr. Gripp's report last week, I think I and I think a lot of people in this room thought those numbers seemed a little bit low. So, being me, I decided to start looking at all the documents that are available publicly on the Verona Township webpage regarding the Camp Co. Development. And so in those documents, on page 193, if anyone is interested in looking at it, there are occupancy standards. So what has to, who have to be living in these houses. So what they say is each, there has to be one occupant at least for each bedroom. Separate bedrooms for parents and children. Children of different biological sex have to be in separate bedrooms and no more than two persons occupying each bedroom. So what that means when you digest all that is that each two-bedroom apartment will have one to two children in it. And each three-bedroom apartment will have two. Will have, would have, will have, may have two. Each, yes, sorry, each three-bedroom will have two, may have up to four. So when we start looking at the numbers that Ms. Dr. Gripp provided us, I believe he said there would be a total of 51 students coming out of that. If it's a three-bedroom, you have to have at least two children. Yeah, they're, I mean, they're on, they're, they're online, but I think might not have, it was hard for me to, because I actually asked people and I, and people would, like pointing me to different, and so finally I just read everything. Right. But, yeah, but so, so that's what we're looking at. So rough numbers, very, very rough numbers. We're looking at a minimum of 95 children in that facility and a maximum of 190. That's just children in the two and three-bedroom. There is, in theory, an ability for a child to be in a one-bedroom, but it would be below school age. It would be like an infant could, could possibly be there. 95. 190. So, again, playing with some numbers. If we start thinking about the people that will be in there, most of those people will be low to very low income, which means they will qualify for free lunch. So now we're looking at if, if every, if 95 students qualify for free lunch out of that facility, we're looking at 72,675 dollars out of our budget. And we currently have about 20 students, right, receiving free lunch? So that right there is 15,300. So we're looking at 87,975 dollars at 425 a lunch times the number, times 95 students times 180 days. So that's the money we're leaving on the table at a minimum if we don't opt into free lunch. At a maximum, it's, the total would be 160,650 dollars. So not only is that money that we're leaving on the table, that's money that will also be coming out of our pocket because we have to cover those expenses at that point. Digging a little bit further, because of me. If we think about what the cost of our students are, each student, the per pupil rate is about 1,500 and 15,500 dollars. So you start multiplying that, it's 15,593 here it is. You start multiplying that by the number of students. At a minimum, we're looking at 1,481,335 dollars in loss, in cost. Now, that's not an accurate number. I know that's not an accurate number because when you add one child to a class that has 20, it's not, but that also doesn't include the increased cost for special education students. If we're sending one student out of district, you're probably looking at close to $100,000 for one student. So, you know, and I'm not saying this because I think that we, we should not welcome these people into our community. These people will be our community members. They will be residents. They will be welcome here. I'm bringing this up because we have about a year that we as a board have to come up with a plan to house at least 95 students. I would, I mean, yes, some of them are not gonna be school age, but there's gonna be more than 95. I think 95 is probably a bit of a lower number. So that's, that's kind of the numbers. And just in case anyone's interested, Hilltop gives us five students. Thank you. Annan gives us two students. So in terms of, you know, loss, that would be about $100,000 that we don't have based on per pupil costs. So this is, this is not like the 51 students that he would, I think he had originally said this can be significantly more. And I think it's something that we really need to start addressing. I mean, not that, not that we haven't already started talking about it. I'm sure Ms. Giuseppi already has contingency plans upon contingency plans. But I, I mean, I think that the, the public needs to understand what we're facing and the fact that the township is not contributing. They're bringing the students in. They're not contributing any funds to our budget. They will say it's all one budget. It's all one tax base. But it isn't because as a board, we are limited in how much we can raise taxes to cover this. And we don't want to raise taxes. I don't want to pay more taxes. But we still have to educate these students and we still want to get them the best education that we can and keep up.
We're also limited to a 2% tax levy.
Right.
Yep.
Right. I mean, there are ways to go around it, but we don't want to do that.
So.
Many ways. Not many, but there's like one. And we don't want to do that.
Denise, thank you for, for taking the deep dive. And, and it's true, the, the board does need to prepare for this. But in the current, we have the seven students coming and both of those developments where those seven are coming from are pilot funds.
Yes.
We've been trying to get a joint meeting on with the town council. You know, I, I met with Mr. Diarco a couple of months ago. I reported it out to the board. I think we need to more aggressively say at the very least, we have seven students and help us fund them, like do a per student cost, if it's our 15,000 or whatever that is, to try and offset what's coming. Because any little bit north of zero from the pilot funds is, you know, a benefit to us.
And last time I looked, I think Hilltop was actually generating about $900,000 to the township. But, to the township fund.
Because then the answer is either gonna be a hard yes or a hard no from the town. And at least we know definitively where we stand. It's been a hard no for at least 15 years. So here we have seven students that we accurately know of and let's go out for the ask.
Commissioner Barzella, what was the low number you said?
The number of students, 95.
And Commissioner Barzella, what was the high number that you said?
190.
So if you, if you split the difference, that's kind of close to 150. Is that not true?
That is very true.
It's funny you say that because I, I read my, my favorite local weblog, MyVerona. You know, I guess criticized by my assessment when I ran and it seems like mine is spot on. So, you know, I, I'm sure there'll be a cover story about that in my favorite weblog. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was much needed and I appreciate the work that you put in for that. When we talk about pilot funds for the seven students, okay, we can approve seven students. This is a very big difference and I think while the numbers are so important and the data, I think that we really need the public to be aware of what we're facing. And it is not just building space. It's teachers. It's not only special education. It's ESL programs. It's intervention programs. It's, it, it is a tremendous amount of change that we could possibly see in order to provide the students with the needs that they deserve as our kids, our students. So I, I too agree that we need the public to really be aware of what we're facing as a board, what we're facing as a district. So that in a year, we don't have shock, which can very well happen. Thank you.
But should also, everything all of you said is absolutely true, my, you know, my, at least in my view. But, you know, when we went to our retreat, you know, we spent a whole lot of time on that retreat on this topic exclusively. So I definitely appreciate the, the homework and the research Commissioner Barzella did. But I, I also think that, you know, anyone listening at his home should, should, you know, take some sauce in that this is something that our superintendent and the board are, are putting as a top priority issue. So that the transition will be as smooth as possible when that, when that day or those, those days come.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Frizzola, for doing all that research. I really greatly appreciate all that. And like Mr. Walker did mention, we did spend a great deal of time as one of our board goals, you know, discussing the demographic, the needs, the space, how we're gonna handle all of this. So I do feel that, you know, we could send another email to the mayor and deputy mayor and request at least another joint, you know, sit down to start thinking because those buildings are going up very, very quickly.
I know the mayor.
We have, we have spoke about this and I think this might be an appropriate time to kind of bring it up again. On our current calendar, we have this, it says work session, which doesn't really, all of our meetings look the same. Should we consider, you know, when we're thinking about our new calendar for January, really having some work sessions where there's still public sessions in a meeting? But maybe we think about a little bit of a lighter agenda so that we can take a little bit more time to talk through any of these things. Is that something that would be beneficial for us? Is it, you know, not really our role in that way? I just want to make sure that we're giving the time that we need to have the discussions that we need around this publicly so that we invite the public to be a part of it. And, you know, is that something that we should think about or?
Yeah, the work session would then become, we wouldn't really have action on every, we would have action the second meeting of the month. And emergency action, one or two items that have to be approved or something like that, but it's unusual. And you would just leave time at the meeting to review the action items for the next meeting.
And I don't think it would have to be every month. I think even if we think strategically and we say, maybe we have, you know, three work sessions over the course of the year or four work sessions, whatever we, whatever you think that we may need even.
I think one, one a month.
Just, just thinking out loud, we have the board goals now. Maybe it's, we start with having every six months, every three months, quarterly meetings to kind of focus on how we're as a board achieving those goals and moving towards that. That could be kind of the agenda for one of those meetings. And then we can also add the work session. I don't know if we need a work session every month, but maybe, because we don't have them now. So, so to go for.
So Diana, I. I have a. I have an idea, I think, I'll, I'll send, I have an idea that I think matches what your vision is. I'll send it to you and if you think it's good, then maybe we'll bring it up to the next meeting. But I, I think there's definitely an opportunity that, to, to kind of capture that vision and help the board.
Thank you. Anyone else for any discussion items?
I do. Okay. I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take out my phone first.
Commissioner Walker.
So I became a New Jersey School Boards Association Certified New Board Member last week. And I'm gonna take my cellphone out to show everybody that I got this awesome new badge. So I'm sure that's another.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We are working towards that goal. Yeah. I'm, I'm gonna just add a shout out here. I, I like to keep track of our alumni, our Verona High School alumni. And a 2020 graduate up at West Point, Cadet Diannecio. He was named the September Scholar, Scholar Athlete up at West Point. And yeah, I just want to read, there was like a beautiful write-up about him and he's also been nominated for the 2024 Fulbright Scholarship, the Knight Henze Scholarship, the Rotary Ambassadorial Scholarship. And he was awarded Dean's List every semester during his cadet career. It's just unbelievable. And he's currently serving as his platoon leader. So the foundation that Verona is building and to hear things back at such a magnitude about our graduates is just really a boon to all of our educators in the district. So congratulations to Cadet Diannecio and congratulations to Verona for pumping out some really, you know, top-notch students.
Thank you. That's wonderful. Okay, moving on to our resolutions, I need a res, a, a motion, please, to approve Resolution A one. Motion by Mrs. Ferreira, seconded by. Ms. Freshy, any discussion? Mr. Cruz, if you could please call roll.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Frizzella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar? Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank.
Thank you. Onto personnel, I need a motion, please, to approve Resolutions B one through B six. So moved. Motion by Mrs. Freshy, seconded by Mrs. Ferrara. Any discussion? Mr. Cruz, if you could please call roll.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Frizzella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to education resolutions, I need a motion to approve Resolutions C one all the way over to C ten. I think that might be a typo. Because we have C eleven, we, they added on, it went to C ten and then we have C eleven, C twelve and C thirteen. So I need a motion to approve Resolution C one to C thirteen. So moved. Motion by Mrs. Freshy, seconded by.
I'll second and I also do.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, did I not do?
No, no, you did, you did. I'll second.
Any discussion?
I do have a quick question. The, um, the New Jersey High Impact Tutoring Grant, what, what is that?
And how was it? That was actually promoted by, I believe started at the governor's office to reduce learning loss as a result of pandemic. So they partnered a bunch of tutoring services around the state by tutoring services or you can be here in health staff. And it was specifically for third grade students, but use the money for grade and elsewhere.
So is this, if this is something, so this is something that they're applying for, right? You don't have it yet. Now, do we know? I don't know if this is a premature, yes, question, but do we know who would, what students would be eligible? Are we still only looking at that third grade? Are we opening it up to? I think that would be. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Cruz, if you could please call roll.
Sure. Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Frizzella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar? Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to resolutions for athletics and co-curricular, I need a motion to approve Resolution D one. So moved. Motion by Mrs. Frizzella, seconded by second, Mrs. Freshy. Any discussions? Mr. Cruz, if you could call roll.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Frizzella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Miss Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to facilities, need a motion, please, to approve Resolutions F, oh, E one, sorry. Motion by so moved. Mrs. Freshy, seconded by
second.
Mrs. Ferrara. Any discussions? Mr. Cruz, roll, please.
Mr. Walker? Yes. Mrs. Frizzella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank.
Thank you. Moving on to our finance resolutions, I need a motion to approve Resolutions F one through F seven. So moved. Motion by Mrs. Frizzella, seconded by Mrs. Freshy. There any discussions?
I just want to thank DFE. I see that they donated two thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars to film production materials. They're so good. They're such a great organization. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz, if you could please call roll.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Frizzella? Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank.
Thank you. Moving on to our governance. I need a motion to approve Resolutions G one through G three. Motion by Mrs. Freshy, seconded by Mrs. Frizzella. Are there any discussions on governance and policies?
I'm just so happy that we have our board goals on here. Very happy and excited and proud of us.
Mr. Cruz, if you could please call roll.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Frizzella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar? Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to public comments, I invite the public. If anyone has anything to bring to, come to the podium, please state your name and address and you have three minutes. Let me just start. Okay, that's fine.
Little bit over three minutes, I promise. Um, before I start, I do want to say that I know what I'm going to ask and speak about today is not ultimately a decision made by the Board of Education.
We just need your, I'm sorry, just, just, no, just, no, just need your name and, sorry.
Sarah Ford, thirty-five Verona Place.
Thank you.
Um, so anyway, I know it's not ultimately going to be made by the board. However, you know, I know that we all know people. Ms. De Giuseppe is here and this is an open forum where I could speak to this. I'm not speaking as a member of an organization, just as a mom. All right, so. Like I said, my name is Sarah Ford. I'm the mom of a recent Verona High School graduate and sixth grader at HBW. I moved to Verona nearly twelve years ago and immediately loved the small town feel and all of my friendly neighbors. Some of the best friends I've made in my adult life have been made here through the community and through my children. Although I didn't grow up here, like many people sitting in this room may have. I do feel like this is truly my home. I'm sorry. Okay. When my daughter started kindergarten in two thousand seventeen, she joined the Verona Competitive Cheer Team. It was the second season of the organization. It was just starting out. It was fairly casual, perfect for her. I spent my high school and college years as a cheerleader, never super competitive. I grew up in a small town and I went to a D three school. But I love cheer and Quinn immediately did too. We knew we had found the right place for her. Now, the VCC doesn't have its own gym or its own practice space, something that can be very difficult and expensive to acquire. It was started by members of the community who had daughters in cheer, really just for the love of cheer. In the previous six seasons, we've been involved. We have practiced all over town and in the schools from FM Brown, Brookdale and in the high school. In the last few seasons, especially post-COVID, the VCC has really ramped up. We compete throughout the state in Ocean City, Maryland, Hershey Park, Pennsylvania. And last year, for the first time, all three VCC teams competed in Nationals in Orlando. It was a great time, super fun experience for them. And to be clear, it's an invitation that you do have to earn. We're proud of them and I hope that Verona would be too. These girls work really hard. They take private tumbling lessons in addition to their practices and tumbling with the team. They blow up tumble tracks and put them in their front yards to practice when they're at home. They practice when they're all together outside of cheer. They put in the work to be the best group of cheerleaders they can be. And more importantly, they are the daughters of our community and they are Verona Public School students. They are kids across all six schools we have. So for some reason, this year, we've been unable to acquire any practice space in any of these schools. I don't know if there was a reason. There's not a reason that we have been given and to the best of my knowledge, not one that the organization has been given. All we have been told by the athletic director is it is not available, specifically the high school. And I can't understand why it was available for seven previous seasons, but suddenly isn't anymore. It's not even a rhetorical question. If there is a reason, I think it would be nice, you know, just to know. Now, to be really honest, it reads to me a little like adults trying to stick it to each other, but it really is kids who are affected. I'm not interested in any way in small town beefs, competitions between different cheer organizations in the town, hurt feelings and or grudges for anyone who's involved. What I am interested in is these hardworking girls. My daughter and her friends are offered space to practice in their own town, despite how any adults may feel about each other. Doesn't seem fair to them. So I am asking the athletic director, Mrs. Palmerezzi, excuse me, or anyone else who has a hand in these decisions to please reconsider. I feel like there is figurative and literal room for all of our towns' amazing cheerleaders. And everything else aside, I'd like to see it done for the girls.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to come up to the public? To the microphone?
Before you move on, if no one else is going to come up, I just pulled the grant up to answer that question more specifically. So students, target population, students most impacted by the pandemic. So our first group of kids will be from our special education program and then we'll reach out to students struggling in the general ed program. There we identification teams that will be comprised of the building principal, third and fourth grade teachers, elementary reading interventionists and district elementary math coach. Teams will then utilize the fall NABAP growth assessment, spring NJSLA data and full DRA data and teacher observation to identify students for the program. So we are in the early stages of identifying students. And this, this starts in the end of October. So they're going to get us the simple, this answer back quickly. So.
Yes, are eligible for the grant by then.
Yeah, and it is how much? I apologize. Yeah, it was a hundred. Was that on there?
Yeah, yeah.
I couldn't find it. I'm looking, thinking for the total. Yeah, I looked, looked. Okay, yeah, that's a hundred eleven thousand.
So then it would be special education, general education.
Third and fourth grade.
Just third and fourth.
Yeah. I think third and fourth, because those were the two groups hit hardest during the pandemic. That's where they are now.
Our first graders are fifth graders now. Like our first graders during twenty twenty.
The kindergarteners though, right? I think that's what they're thinking. That's what the state was thinking, the kids that were in kindergarten.
Right now, third graders would be, would have been preschool.
Yeah, so fourth graders really.
It's really.
It's interesting.
It's really.
Fourth and fifth. Fourth, fifth and sixth.
Fourth, fifth and sixth. I mean, we could keep going, but because we're talking about our first graders twenty twenty, second graders twenty twenty-one, which really missed two years of literacy instruction. So since this, I'm just going to kind of, you know, I'm wondering too. I think this is a great program. I would love to, you know, if, if we do have it, but if we can think about how we can support the students that need, I think, especially in times now where people may not necessarily have the extra two hundred dollars a week to pay for a tutor because that's what it costs. If we can maybe think about if we have high school students that might be interested in supporting our youngers, if we have, you know, if we, I know that we have such a tight budget. This grant is a, is a, would be a beautiful thing if we're able to get it. If not, or if alongside with it, if we can think about how we can support our students who are continuing to struggle.
Yeah, I just brought up the grant. It actually specifies in students in grades three and four. For, that's what the, that's what the state put out, but it does say LEAs awarded the grant to serve additional students as needed and optimize the funding for targeted tutoring for identified vendors or organizations in addition to schools and districts that may establish research-based criteria. So you can branch out a little, but your main focus has to be third and fourth graders.
Yeah, and as far as like high school tutoring, I know at least at the public library, they're starting up their like homework helpers tutoring program is specifically specifically aimed at that concern right now. Just in case anyone in the community wanted to know, that's going to be in, running in the weeks to come.
I have, I've, do we promote that as a, as a district? How would parents?
So, um, I actually need to send that out, but I have.
You are just the best.
But, um, yeah, so that's promoted from the library right now. So I'm probably going to like get around that and have that. I have blasted out like the, the school has blasted out library events, opportunities for volunteer hours for that sort, that sort of thing and events to students before. And there is library promotional materials from the public library like right over there too. So that very much is like a back and forth that exists, yeah.
And so the National Honor Society also provide tutoring?
Yeah, and National Honor Society students are required to get tutoring to, to give tutoring to retain their membership.
So how would parents go about that? Like what is the process for parents who are interested in possibly getting a tutor for their child through any of these services other than the library?
Yeah, so for National Honor Society, I believe it's typically within the high school wherein it's, teacher will recommend it to students. Yeah.
But it doesn't have to be.
No.
We, you know what, I'll talk to Marissa Ackerman and then the Chris Tamboro, who Mrs. Ente too, right? Mrs. Ente and Mr. Tamboro about whether we can extend that out to some of the younger kids that are needing some support.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so our next scheduled public meeting will be held on October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, beginning with confidential session at six P M and public session at seven P M in the Verona High School Learning Commons. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion to adjourn, motion by Mrs. Ferrara, seconded by, by Mrs. Freshy. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Our meeting is adjourned and it is seven fifty-three. Have a great evening, everyone.